That's not true.
No, I'm just asking, because I don't know what you mean by that.
First of all, that's not true. Even as you're accelerated, you will still get the same amount of hours, it will just be done differently. And I think it was in this very room, I had a conversation with the faculty about a program that I used many years ago where we allowed students to take only one course at a time. But it was for about three or four weeks. Over the course of the semester, they were still able to take their full five or six classes, but by taking just the one class at a time, they focused only on that one thing. And then they got through, because say, for example, if you start college and you need to take developmental math, and let's say there are three levels, and you start at the lowest level, semester one, semester two, semester three. If you went during the summer, that's a full year. If you didn't go through the summer, that's a year and a half before you can get into college math. And a lot of people just get very discouraged. But if we could find a way to let you take the first one in three or four weeks, the second one, the third one, by the end of the first semester here, if you were successful, you could actually be completing all of your college math requirements. You know, the model hasn't been refined yet, but I will also share this with you, that there is, there is a college. It's been in existence for a long time, and this is exactly what they do. This is their model. Students take that one class at a time to help them so they can be successful. Part of this also is that, as students, you all are very intelligent. And let me tell you what some of you all do. You're supposed to take math, and you're in whatever program it is. Math is required for graduation, and you say, well, math is hard. So you go by this advisor over here, and they let you sneak into some course. You sneak into another one over here, and then you've got fifty-seven credits, and the three you're missing is that one math class. And you spend the next year and a half trying to get through, and just getting frustrated at doing that. And that's wrong. You know, it's wrong for us to encourage that kind of pattern to occur. Because at the end of the day, you end up spending all of your time and still missing that one or those two classes to earn your degree. We do not want to continue those patterns. So we're looking at models that could potentially work and help our students. I am glad to raise that point. As, as a college that belongs to the Achieving the Dream Initiative, that's precisely, those are precisely some of the things we're looking at. And sometime in early January, right, Cora? We will be doing focus groups. In fact, yesterday, we had a discussion, Professor Eagleson and Hamilton and I, and I think somebody else was there. And Julie, and we were talking about involving students in helping to build these kinds of models that will work for you all. No, that would be different, but yeah, this is more like a focus group that we facilitate. Do you have a question, sir? You're not supposed to ask. This is for our students.
I'm a janitor, and I have so many, but I'm proud of the destiny. I transferred to CCDC, the Northern Southern Community College. And I transferred here with sixty-seven credits towards my degree in liberal studies. I understand through, yesterday I went to find out the age, my transfer grade is not even posted, so I'm still listed as a freshman. And that's one area. The second area is that, I'm a senior citizen, so I'm back in school. I haven't had math since nineteen sixty-seven, so that's a long time. I went through physical conditions, speaking of, I went through school, got all these courses, but I was always afraid of math and science. So I took anything of math and science. So here I am, at this age, trying to get through math. And I'm not doing that bad. I'm trying to do my credit test for chapter four. Okay, so I'm at that point. And I came here under the disability status. And I think, I believe that I am supposed to be allowed an additional thirty minutes, but I'm not getting that. And when I see that when you take the credit test, time is racing, and I'm not, nowhere, well, I'm almost finished, but I'm not. So my thought is, I got to finish, I got to finish, so I'm racing at that point. It's causing me, I feel, to lose my focus. Okay, that's another thing that I'm having problems with. And also, passing the buck, okay? I don't care what department I go to with a problem. It always seems that they're not knowledgeable of what needs to happen, so they refer me to something else, or refer me to another person. And it has become very frustrating, but I know that failing for me is not an option. I came here with two-point-five something GPA average. And I've never, the whole time I've been in college, and I've been in college taking courses part-time, on and off, since nineteen seventy-two, and I think I had one F on my transcript. And here I am, faced with failing, and I've never failed before, and it's frustrating. You know, but I'm gonna stick with it because I'm on this journey, and I know I got to succeed. And I'm trying to work my way back into the workforce. You know, and it's just frustrating, or especially for older persons coming back to college. When you come in with a lot of young people, talking in class, popping the color phone, speaking over instructors, you wanna learn, but you can't hear, you know. They could be in my place.
All right, so let me jump in here. Thank you very much. First of all, all of you young people, would you please stop popping the gun? I'm serious.
I mean, I've mentioned to the teacher, and he told me he can't carry enough classes. He said, right in front of him, he's vomiting. If that's the case, it'll hurt me like a cigarette, I'll calm down. But when you go to the professor, he actually says, oh, I can't hear it. Well, I can hear it, and he still never addressed it. He tells me to go address it. I'm already mad because you're sitting here doing it.
And also, I'd like to say that, in order to give your child, this is the first time in my life where I've ever had to be subjected to this type of environment. You know, and, you know, it needs to change. You know, if you're gonna have high standards, then it has to start with how you act.
I totally agree with you. Let me ask you to talk to Dr. Peters about those transfer grades, because she'll, she'll work with you to make sure that the registrar, the admissions office, does something about it, because if the transcripts have been received, there is no reason why those grades should not have been properly recorded. In terms of the disability, if you have a documented disability and it's been logged, you should be getting those accommodations. If you're not getting them, then we need to understand, we need to know who's doing that, and we're supposed to deal with that.
And who I go to before that?
Dr. Peters and Dr. Jackson. Because it's both a faculty and disability issue.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have another question. How do you catch that students cheating with the cell phones in study? There's no such thing, they got the cell phones on a desk. Yes, people study with their cell phones, but they cheat, and they use cell phones, and they cheat off the cell phone. Teaching them, say, put your cell phones away, you don't play.
That's an issue, and I know Dr. Jackson's writing that down, and when we do faculty development, it would be an issue that will be raised, to make sure that that's not actually happening. Hold on, hold on, hands down for a minute. Delaney, you have a question?
Well, I have a question, and it was just basically the issue of the course of the system. And it was like, you know, after my classes, there were students that were distracted, they cursed, and I understand that the faculty professors are trying to do the job, but they can't do it really. Students, so I wanted to find some way of enforcing code conduct, making it stricter, or do you think something to prevent the ones that, like I said, want to actually contribute education?
The thing is, I'm responsible for own learning, a lot of times, what I'm hearing is a lot of microwave solutions. They have. The other thing is, it's in the syllabus as to how to conduct yourself in a class. And it's up to the actual professional doctors to actually illustrate or perhaps give you the information. If you have to give you the syllabus, you understand that sure things are not supposed to be did. Whether that's being enforced or not is another issue. So it's in place. It's not enforced. And that's, that's an issue that, it doesn't distract me, because my objective is very clear. This is a good, suprachemiority environment. I don't kick you, you're a gun, my focus ain't on you. And that's another thing. My focus is extremely on me. And if it doesn't bother, they're kids. They're gonna do that. I can't change it, I'll just kill them.
Hang on.
You're gonna be here all night.
Let's take one from off the sheet. It comes from Ms. Trerida Delaney. Is she here? No, okay, well, we'll take it anyway. And it says, why is financial aid so disorganized? I am very disappointed overall.
Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Claire from the University of Minnesota, U of U. At CCDC, I'm in Washington campus. And it's not that financial aid is unorganized. There was a glitch in our system, in the computer system, that causes us to be here. We have been working this hard this year. I have been at the left eleven o'clock, or before eleven o'clock, in the last two months. So it's not that we're unorganized. We're all responsible for financial aid. I don't have any access to direct someone in the IT department, or if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. Again, I don't know what the organization is that you dictate them to do because your loans or your refunds are late for those who didn't owe them. But I ask students, please check with the financial aid office. A lot of students are calling because we may have, he is, and I may have mine. But the question could be, is it something that I haven't turned in? Is it something that you're asking for? I'll get to you in one second. Is it something that you're asking for that I don't have? Is it something missing all around? First thing I ask for a young man that walked in earlier, you have a PIN number, or you use it. Okay, we're in college, and again, I know that they're kids, but this is a way between upper child. You have to go, because in some universities, we are only dealing with you through electronics. Okay, but when you come into the office, you bombard that office. You come in because you're hostile, and we deal with it, because we have no other choice. I know that you're upset about your refund. So am I, because we are manually doing a binding. And once it gets to the refund status, you're still saying it's financial aid. Once I make sure, and once I get authorization for your refund to go to the student account side, it is no longer a financial aid issue. It becomes now the responsibility of the student accounts office. But you still call financial aid, because it's financial aid if you think that's how we do it. We are a tree with many branches, just like here at the community college. The young lady said, I came to financial aid, and I couldn't get apparently my loan, because someone in the registrar's office has not evaluated her transcript to make her a junior. Hell doesn't care what you are, as long as you are undergraduate. So it must be loan status. I don't want a freshman loan, I want a junior loan, because I get more money and I'm a junior. But I can only pay you according to what the registrar's office says that you are. Go back to me in a tree with many branches, if you use your PIN number, and just go out there and see what your status is. There could be something that we missing that we need. If I didn't turn in my parents' taxes, and he has a refund, that could be an issue. You could have been in a haste and didn't sign a form. But because I'm governed by reg, I'm gonna follow them. Otherwise, the university's out of compliance, and there is no financial aid. So with that being said, we're not unorganized. I've been doing this for twenty-two years. I am just as stunned as you are, and I'm just as frustrated, and God knows I'm tired as Dr. Cabera. But at the same time, we have been there tirelessly and effortlessly, bringing in staff to help us, and they've been very good at it. But at the same time, guys, you gotta help us help you by looking at your stats. Don't just call and say, where's my stuff? Go and look and say, did I do everything? There's an approach from both sides. And again, you know, anytime, anywhere, I'm on the web, I'm on the website, claredcbc.edu. Put your name and ID number, just ask me the status. I've been doing it all weekend, on Saturdays and Sundays, if there's something missing. So now that we're organized, we got to find out if you are the one that's unorganized. Something could be missing, and let's find out if it is. I think it's probably on you. But you know, let's start with the telephone. I've been using that phone for two years. I've called financial aid a number of times, and I've given a call to leave my name and number for someone to call me back, and I can't remember. Can I address it? Can I address it? Financial aid has a flagship and a CCDC. I have two counselors awarding and answering phones. While flagship was going on at the, at UCDC, I had your class star in September. Book vouchers were still being handed for them, with two counselors, myself, and a person I'm trying to get.
Two counselors, of course.
That's right. One was out, and one was over here for some time. We had to bring that person back to our office just to help award. But nobody looks at the big picture. So again, if you use your PIN number, you can see where you're standing. Right now, there are no counselors in the office at all, because I've had to shift it to a location where there'd be no instructor. It's like a one-stop shop. I'm sorry, but that's the way it's taken. I gotta do what I take. No lights, no phone, no nothing, just a computer and files to process.
They're pretty happy, students, you know.
I would love to hire some students to help us, but I need some students back. You can only be on the front, you can't be deep, you can't go too deep, because, you know, that's another issue. What you tell them, they busy. Oh, I think it was the lady in the, oh, someone over here was a lady, I'm sorry, I cut right into you.
I have a question, of course, about financial aid. My concern was when we were having one, two students, actually.
That's, that's over here, actually, the one, the rough, there's two professors. But the one that was supposed to be going out on six.
So if we're gonna work in a year, we have two people working in that.
It's so frustrating, you know, I mean... It is frustrating, but you have to look at, your frustration does start here. It starts with me, because the question that I'm, all along, with the view that I can only do what I can do. I mean, to work eleven o'clock, move my voice and everything else, I'm giving it up, because I like what I do.
Any more questions on financial aid? Is the lady over there?
Julie, sitting here listening. First of all, let me say, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Claire. I had a problem with, not with financial aid, but with student funding. And I kinda got some misinformation, but through talking to people, I got it straight back. So I wanna say, I see your problem, and I understand how things can be frustrating for everyone, because of them there. But it was a good thing, because if you talk to people, you'll find out what you need to know. And in my case, I found out through financial aid, where to go to talk to someone to get my stuff taken care of. And I went to this lady, she made three phone calls. And within those three phone calls, I had five days, and I had my return. It just takes time. You gotta have patience, because without patience, you can't do anything. You can't earn.
And a lot, and a lot of people, I know y'all from the test, whatever y'all need, a lot of people have been in financial aid a long time. Y'all come to financial aid just to be told that that's a registrar's issue. You know, she was in financial aid to be told, you have to go to the registrar's office for your transcript. But a lot of people call financial aid, and a lot of actors been in a lot of time, and we got involved. So the problem goes back to your refund. It's a conflict of interest, so we would authorize your money and disperse it to you. But because you don't see it, you think I'm holding it up.
No, we don't hold it up.
I mean, I know, I mean.
I have two questions. I want to say, because first off, I'm just that, as far as disability, or the wheelchair, the elevator broke down last week. One of them was over there, the elevator. So my concern is, can it, can it be put to where their classes could be down here?
That's, see, again.
That would be a safety thing.
All right, I'm in financial aid, that's a disability. Jamal Reed is the person over at the flagship, and I think, Dr. Jackson, okay.
Okay. And then, my other statement was, too.
Dr. Vera?
Yeah. When we came in this year, coming until the thirteenth of September, a week after the thirteenth of September, we could not spend any more of our money. And we were cut off from returning or changing any books. Because basically, if we came in August twenty-first, like we did last year, then it wouldn't have been no problem, you know, we would have had enough time to make sure we had the right book for the right class. We would have been able to use our monies like we were supposed to. But because we came in the thirteenth of this year, all that was cut off, okay? Some people even had to buy another book, because they could not return the book. And I wanna know, next semester and next year, is it gonna be like this? Because I think that was, that was totally disrespectful. And then some, some of our professors that we got, some of them, the morning we met them, had a phone call to say, oh, I'm gonna be here, I'm gonna teach you that, okay? I think that was totally disrespectful, too. So tell me that this is gonna get better?
I can only, I can see if I can just talk. Okay, and let me, let me take part of this, and I'll share it with the campus. As far as the book vouchers were returned, again, remember, we had two scholarships. There was an opportunity to take with, out for flagship. And then you weren't, if you were gonna get booked, too, students with CCDC were actually able to get them at that time. And then, yes, I got this. I'm gonna share with everybody. And, and so, when we cut off, there's two cutoff phases, the business, the business office, and then there's one for financial aid. If we don't cut off, we can't produce a refund. As long as the book vouchers are being sold, and you're on financial aid, then we can't cut off. Then they, but they offered you. There was an offerance of a card, and you could put all your book money on that card, and you could shop in the bookstore until your book card was empty. And I can tell, Steve, you've been so much, you always be there. Yeah, there's a book card that is issued, and you can put all your money on that card, and you can shop.
Okay, but, um...
But, but we do have to cut off at some point, otherwise.
Okay, I understand that, I understand that, because I was at the flagship last year, okay? This is my first year here.
Yeah.
I couldn't use the card because of RSA, okay?
Oh, okay.
What's that, I'm sorry, what's that? Okay, so, and when that's cut off, at the time that financial aid is cut off, that goes back, okay?
Okay, so the issue.
Again, I can't do a book card, I can't do, but only if the university says, yes, I'll continue to take this, then that could be done.
Again, that's not on financial aid, that's to the account side, but there's, that should be an agreement. And I know it was two years ago, when I had the rules on the RSA policy. I don't, I got enough policies. But the rule was, that if you were RSA, and you had, and they gave you book money, then they could, they too can allocate seven hundred dollars for your book money, that you can use that. But just like they got power to their rules, if you don't know what books you're gonna need within five days, that's a problem. But I know that they change it.
Okay, but, but see, the problem with the money, that's no, that's no issue, okay? Because they give you the money that you need. I can take my students to the bookstore.
Right.
And they can pick up my books, okay? They can give me my books. By the time I start my class, that's not the books the professor got.
Okay, but then that goes back to the B's, the B's.
When I go back to take my book back, but the time is cut off, okay?
Now, that, you know, from my experience.
Now, RSA has no problem with saying, okay, you know, I'll go ahead and give this money, but the university is saying, no, we're not taking RSA money no more. Why not? Because when you cut RSA money off, it goes back to RSA.
Right, I understand that, because you're saying the university, you know, and I'm in financial aid, but I'm hearing a gap, okay? When you go to RSA, or when you go to your book to the winners, and the, and the, you know, that's the state, that's not the book I'm gonna use, then he should be able to use that book in his student. That goes back to the B. That, that doesn't have anything to do, the bookstore is the only ordering, what, a lot of the laws, and that's the order. And that's just me. In my graduate, they did the same thing. I'm gonna use this book unless you just gonna fail me, but this is what was on your syllabus, this is what I bought, I'll open it, and I can't take it back. And there is also a lot of time for return books, but they can't be opened.
But last year, I had no problem with that.
Well, last year, we was all on the same date.
Exactly, this year, we were, exactly. That's my point. So my question still is, next semester, how's it gonna be? Next year, how's it gonna be?
It's gonna be better.
It's gonna be, except we're gonna come in and help.
This is the reason why we're here. This is the reason why Dr. Cabera and all these staffs, we all this meeting, so we can find out where your heart is valued, and try to implement as much of your desires as we can. And this is why we're here.
So next year, I'll be coming in in August.
Upstate Michigan, lovely. You will have a good year, I imagine.
The calendar for next year has already said, I don't know what the date is, but I think it's the end of August, actually. You know, you can handle it so long as you want. Yeah, we can move on.
My question is regarding the ability for students to create, to take classes at Bennett's campus, right, first, but I'm gonna do the thing. I've heard that it's actively not allowed if you are in charge of students, they have to here, and also, you know, you have to take the proper courses. Something that I just, today, over in the restaurant, I'm defending, and at the very bottom of this, it states, CCDC students cannot register in music courses without the departmental consent, and vice versa. So that's the word, as of today, this is what I got. So what is the official word for handing in CCDC, when I have this one, that we are allowed to on the express?
So I've been having ongoing series of meetings with various university officials in terms of this very, this issue of community college students taking flagship courses, or vice versa. The agreement is that except in special cases, the intent by the fall of 2011 is that community college students will be enrolled in community college courses. What we have done this semester is look at all the programs of study, meaning if you're a respiratory therapy program, or a drug design, whatever it may be, to determine what flagship courses have been embedded in those programs of study, and make sure that we have an equivalent community college courses for our students. There was concern in terms of too much mix of students. Uh, there was concern in terms of too much mix, uh, of students, fact that you might be in class with someone who might be a junior, or you're a first-year student. It was really some real challenges in terms of what the results were, uh, with those classes. So I just had a meeting today with the provost, Professor Baxter, to talk about this very issue. And so, again, it was reiterated that our law by fall two thousand and eleven, we had it in our courses now. There are one or two different programs which still have required flagship courses, and those will get changed at some point over this academic year. Um, but there is not gonna be this ease of going back and forth and taking a flagship course and, and vice versa. That up because there was two unit related issues along with that, particularly the tuition.
Um, okay, we know you're right.
Hey, can I get a copy of that? I didn't know about that plotter, so.
So for flagship students, um, you can choose your favorite issue for tuition, but what if it's too full-time low? It's too high for tuition. So if I'm at a full, I go, and I, I don't know the exact figure, with three thousand dollars. Let's say I'm at full-time, it's three thousand dollars. And then by taking it up to first, first, first time, what if there's just a professor and this, that somehow I can't do these, that I enjoy, and my, my brother has, and I just wanna take that course. I'm still paying, you know, my price, I just don't.
No, because again, the intent is for you to be in community college courses now.
But I think she's saying that she's, she's the president of course, right?
Right, if you're a flagship student, but some of the flagship instructors got checked over here. So if you're a flagship student, if there's one professor that is over here, you really want to take that course from that professor. And I would maybe get over and get a cheaper rate or anything to want to take it from that professor. In addition, if you already made a schedule and you have a mix, that's you, you can practice, and flagship courses, where, which one?
Well, first thing is, it's still, it's my understanding that, uh, flagship students are not gonna be allowed to take those CCDC courses with your favorite, like, wanting to be a professor. And the second thing, what did you just say?
If you already made a schedule made and you have a mix, if they're flagship courses and they're.
What, what they're, what they're doing is that they are monitoring those schedules and, um, they have, we're gonna drop you all those classes. And so there was a lot of, uh, vigorous discussion in general in terms of dropping students. We had asked that they not do that this semester, because there were a lot of students who had mixed schedules and they wanted to merge these students. And, um, so Dr. Peters and I, as well as another dean, were involved in that dialogue, but beginning next semester, they will be getting four to. That's what the flagship decided.
So the first thing is, are you making four, correct, and you have that deal?
I would suggest that these students, that's, that is, that could be a course that is now in our course inventory, that they actually will be able to flagship to take. So I would recommend that for students who have those mixed schedules, to at least give them a list of, was there, one of our staff members? Hold on, one second.
You can come, Diana?
Would you stand up?
Gotcha.
There's a question over here, and then just the reminder back.
Um, so in other words, what you're saying is that you cannot do overlapping classes anymore. Like, I'm at the associate degree level and I wanna step, while I'm at my last year, I wanna step into my bachelor's, and I would be able to do that.
At the associate degree level, the expectation is that you will take associate degree level courses. And so, uh, in terms of taking a flagship course unless it's in a certain circumstance, which they're gonna make allowance for, because there are gonna be circumstances where there are, we are gonna have that responsibility. But in terms of, I just wanna take this course in, uh, whatever it might be, I'm not gonna be able to do that.
But not what I'm looking at. And my goal is to, in five years, have my PhD. And the only way I can do that is to overlap from class at my associate to my bachelor.
You can come and talk to me about that, but I'm just, I'm not gonna make any promises that, again, they are really holding firm to our, uh, community college students, you know, college levels courses.